Jackie, will you take roll call please?
Board member Sal Gray?
Present.
White?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Roscoe?
Yes.
At this time, I would entertain any public comment that we have. If you'd step to the podium and let us know your name and address for the record, please. Moving on to consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion on the claims? Moving on to the minutes from our meeting, any conversation, question, discussion of the minutes? If not, I would take a motion. So much. All in favor?
Alright.
Those. Question carries. For the utility informational items.
Yeah, waiting on Rocky, so. Go and do yours.
So last time we talked about turbinate, we had some issues with the air emissions. Did a little more digging, the guys got in there. Found is that half of the water nozzles, ejector nozzles were not working properly. But this little time that new was put in in 2000, so it's got some age to it. So the biggest deal is like to say that proprietary part to GE alone, trying to get that part. You say they have some of the production, we're still trying to get them to say, number one, how much? And then number two, availability. There is some after markets that are possibly available out there. Only concern is that they're so sophisticated, the units that we're really concerned to spend that kind of money. Trying to give you an idea of the aftermarket one, just for one of these is $1,400 piece extent of them. So we want to make sure what we get is kind of worth it. So hopefully more details come, we'll find out some more availability on that. Last meeting, give us the nod to go ahead and order a couple of diesel fuel. We didn't get those spot at the meeting, it was 3.44. The next day they did get it down to 3.38, so we saved a little bit more. Which is good because actually we had to agree that morning to that price because it actually went up 15 cents more over the 3.44 on top of that. So we'll get that. We'll see what happens now.
How much change up on it?
Two loads, about over 14,000 gallons.
Well, that was your 70,000 budget.
It's within the 70,000. And then the I U B inspection where they come in. We were part of their annual, where they annually come around. However, they're really far behind because of transmission franchise stuff they're going around to review all. There's so many of those going on right now. He told me we were the sixth one, he's been able to get to the state of Iowa this year, so I don't need to buy a lottery ticket. But anyway, the office visit went really well, had everything there. Maybe a lot of respect, of course, what he's expecting is a few years old. So there's a few things out there, the idea that we'll find a little bit something. Nothing, nothing major out there hanging that maybe kind of concern. So we'll be getting that later, we'll respond to it and they're gone or to do this.
So we'll get a letter or a report from them?
Yep, we'll get a letter and report from them on that, just like we always do. We'll get a report from over state what, what they find out there. If you know, whether it's on the office side, if there's anything there, they'll tell us. All I have to do is, we have to respond, I think in 30 days, what our plan of action is to fix those issues.
How often is that visit?
They're supposed to come every year, but right now, talking through with them, they're down to one inspector for the state of Iowa to do all of this. They have one, typically have two inspectors and one inspector to supervise your position, that sets them another position up. So that supervisor jumped to that position, so they're really short handed in there.
I think it'd be good if you could share that report with us.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can. Yep, sure. Other than that, it was normal. Normal things going on right now, sports projects.
Rocky, are you there?
You want to ping him on the side and then?
Yeah, I just sent him an email and a text message, so who wants to get back?
Okay. So you want to move on to the water utility?
Sure. We had a Western leak location come in and sound the city in this year, he found seven leaks, not a water main break. He said he couldn't believe it, dry as it is, so, but we've listened to her staff, we've got letters sent out. We'll be working with those seven homeowners to fix the lines that are leaking going into their homes. Otherwise, we, phase four was completed on the streetscape today for us on the tie-in there on Ashland B. Looked real well. Down for a few hours, left painting, door hangers and stuff. And right in the middle of that, a new crew on West Boston, oh, the water service side, you can't vibrate there, they just keep hitting them left and right. And then they hit gas, maybe then after that, so it's just one of those kinds of things. But otherwise, we're staying really busy. We've done some big projects ourself in-house and we're going to be pouring concrete back the next three or four days because of that. So, boys are all busy. A couple of times we came in early, heat to heat with the bus schedule and everything. I don't want to get started until after, school start tomorrow, so we're going to get started after they've worked through lunch and stuff instead to get these projects done here. To minimize the traffic damage. So otherwise.
So you mentioned the gas break, or I know that's not necessarily ours, but do we get called in on those repairs?
Yes.
So last week, there were like three or four on the square.
Right, and we got called in on every one of them because, you know, they drive over the top of that area. So what we would have marked essentially is gone. So and then if you get a company comes in, like Mid-American Energy, they came in, they, they protocol called in their, you know, leak. Big call, emergency gate, first call.
So you responded, I mean, I didn't know that how that repair, that emergency.
Through our one call, we do, we respond to all, all locates that are called in, whether it be by the bush, backyard or whatever.
Yeah, well, I knew that, I guess I just didn't think about gas, meaning that our gas.
Hey Lou, did, have you heard any more about how much you're going to have to cover with what we, the discussion last meeting about although? In the streetscape stuff that went bad?
I'm keeping track, you know, of the.
That we will probably know what, who's going to do what for quite a while.
Well.
Like ever.
No, they'll definitely want a page, you know, definitely whatever the change orders will, you know, have that discussion on.
Okay.
What actually could possibly be.
I don't think it was on in the last change order that they had last meeting for council.
No, no, it was not, it was not.
Because I looked for it.
So there's some change order out there.
Okay, thanks.
So we're going to get a balance on the difference between their change orders and what we're having to fix? I know when we kind of chatted a little bit in the parking lot last week or whatever, something about accountability on their side needs to start happening. At some point, that's, this starts sounding like there's a lot less accountability happening on their side, more and more and more.
We're working with them and the conversation's got to get more serious, obviously. And, yeah, it's, oh, in the prospect of if we win this battle, will it end up costing us more in the war type thing?
So watch for change orders.
Yes, I'm going to definitely.
No, I mean, that will tell the story, kind of.
Tell story, yeah. And like I say, this last project, this phase four, like Charlie had mentioned, that should be it on the main streets. Now, when we get in the alleys, those four alleys are going to be very, very crowded. Because up until now, we haven't done any sanitary sewer. So they're deeper, start off with them, then do the water, then do the storm, and then Mike, Mike will come in and curb with the fiber. Yeah, they've got gas issues back and I think three or four alleys that they want to, you know, the gas, Mid-American needs to deal with some things, that kind of thing.
Are they lined up to do that to me?
I think so, I know that the one line that wasn't ironed, that they, they were setting up for the street, they drove the stake through the plastic line. And then when they pulled the stake out, or then they had that, you know, similar to the Saturday, had to evacuate, you know, cancel appointments and people that were stuffing their hair.
I want to know about those people that are processing, what happens to them?
I'm going to try with that thing.
This is what happened. Sample right here. But it's, it's one of those things, it's, we are going to, and talking, Chris and Ben and I, and, you know, we're going to.
If at some point you have a way to kind of put a summary together of that, that might be good.
Okay. I was just waiting.
I know, I know, we've kind of put you on the spot. Does that mean we have rock? Okay, I'm going to move this a little bit.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go back to the solar update.
Yeah, so we'll go back to the solar update, so Rocky joined us. I'll kind of turn it over for him and Rocky, give us an update on where we're at and what's going on with our solar project.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So, you know, first of all, sorry for being a little late on the meeting. I had some technical difficulties and actually had to get on with my phone, so. But yeah, on the solar project, so as you. Projects across multiple communities in multiple states. And we've had some challenges getting all the communities kind of reined in. A few of them have had issues where the site that they had, you know, that they had kind of earmarked for solar either fell through, they were purchasing it. Or, you know, another use came up for it, or there was an environmental issue that made them have to pivot a site. And unfortunately, you know, the nature of this project is the way that we can offer the lower pricing is through, through like the volume that comes with all the communities participating. And so, so that's delayed the process. I, I want to apologize to I M U specifically, just because your staff has been, you know, the example of, I guess. I have to say, I'm working with nine of the 19 communities and nobody comes close to your staff. I mean, Chris and Mike, you know, Mike was so helpful through the whole navigating transformers. You guys had a site picked out way ahead of time and we did a great site visit, we had everything kind of ironed out. Mike was really helpful in helping other communities figure out the transformer thing. I mean, we relayed a lot of the information that he gave us and education that he did. And Chris has just been really helpful in staying on it and staying on schedule. So I hate, I hate that your community, you know, is being delayed by these other communities, especially since you guys have really been, in my opinion, the best community to work with. But I think we are getting really close right now. So, you know, there's still like a, really no outstanding issues on the PPA document with Waverly that we'll be using for Indianola. But it needs to just get finalized. I think they had their final meeting and I believe Steve Nadel, that you guys know pretty well, I think you use him as counsel as well. Steve was like traveling, so he, he put up an effort to really try to like finalize the document, but I haven't seen the final PPA come across. So, you know, I want to, I want to thank you guys for your patience, but I also want to apologize for the delays because nothing your community has done has delayed this. If anything, you've really helped, you know, carry a lot of the other communities and get things moving in the right direction. So with that having been said, I'll take any questions you guys might have.
With the solar, we're putting that in, what kind of cost savings per, for the, rather than purchasing it, are we getting from putting this four megawatts in?
So right now, you know, I guess Dom can bring it to speed. The proposal that we'll see is actually lower than our current rate. I think typical of these solar projects and, you know, we were expecting something in the neighborhood of five and a half to six cents. Rocky and with his group has offered us, Rocky, can we talk numbers yet or you want to talk ballpark?
Still there?
You muted yourself? You can talk ballpark right now.
So, you know, I'll throw, somewhere in the tune of 10%. When we originally started this, yeah, saying, when we originally started this project, I provided the trustees with a couple of examples, and of course, this was before natural gas kind of changed the electrical landscape, where we'd probably start breaking even in year three to six. The natural gas volatility rate increase.
Hi, can you guys hear me? I think I lost you there for a minute.
And we can hear you now.
Okay, so, sorry about that. Did you, did you want me to go back through that?
No, we were, is, is the rate public yet? The actual PPA power rate, public information? Can we talk specifics or we still?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, please do. It was public right from the get-go, I believe, because it was, it was a public opening in the RFP, so.
So with that, it's right around 9% that we'll see saving. This was going to be, you know, when there are some early estimates that I had that we, it is 3.99 cents with a half a percent annual escalator. We were at that point sitting just a little bit below that with our wholesale rates. And then traditionally, what we've seen is a percent to a percent and a quarter of inflationary pressures on those conventional methods. So, you know, with those numbers as tight as they were, we knew at some point that half a percent escalator, annual escalator would drop underneath the, the conventional methods. So, you know, atypical of these types of projects, with our recent rate increase that's, you know, because of those natural gas prices, we're actually going to start the project, the first kilowatt electricity that comes out of there will be underneath our conventional methods. And I think the board's direction previously was, you know, that it didn't necessarily need to be, you know, a match one for one. But we were looking for an opportunity that was economic and, you know, I think by all indications, where we're crossing, you know, at some point early on in this project's lifespan, those, those economics were going to be there. Now that we're, Rocky has, throughout this last year, they're going to maintain that 3.99 cent per wholesale kilowatt pricing. So with that, you know, we'll see savings day one from our conventional wholesale. And in addition to those savings on a per kilowatt basis, we'll have less transmission involved, which of course will, you know, transmission markets are relatively volatile. We've seen pretty substantial increases in those, you know, myso transmission charges with all the projects going on in the region for transmission related. We didn't expect those ever to drop. So we have kind of a, we have some hard dollar savings day one on that solar product as well as some a little more conceptual savings on transmission, electricity that we would have otherwise had to market.
Chris, if you have that presentation, that might be really good to share with Dom.
Yeah, I might answer some of my other ones that I was going to ask, but that, that way I don't repeat everything, because I'm sure there's a lot of those questions.
Really good information in that, I think that will help you be a little bit of insight to how he was thinking about it.
No, that'd be great, you send that to me and then I'll build off any of that later on. Don't repeat for them.
Oh, you're fine. So if we're near the end of the contract or signing the contract, what's that timeline? What's, what's out in the next 60 days?
Rocky, yeah, that's what I was going to add. So can you elaborate a little bit about what the near term future looks like in, you know, all the way through your, now, now that this has been delayed? Where are you anticipating completion for Indianola and for the entire project?
So our, our hope was to have every, all the PPAs across all communities signed in the first week of September. We're looking pretty close to that goal. Iowa, you know, Iowa communities, as I mentioned, are delayed just because everything kind of ran through Waverly and that's drawn out a little bit with multiple sites. And I think they had probably the most extensive comments on the PPA, but, but as I mentioned, we're, we're there now with that document. So we should be able to get that to you for your next meeting. Then after that, we, you know, there's some lead time, once we have all the PPAs executed in our data room, to be able to deliver to the R U S, the USDA, our US program for financing. But our anticipated breaking ground now is, is going to be early summer of 2023. And it might be sooner than that, but that's, that's a kind of a conservative goal that we have right now. And, and we expect, you know, to be placed in service in 2023. That's our anticipated commercial operation state, if you will.
So from our perspective, Chris, what's, what's I M U's obligation in order to make this happen?
We have to receive the final document. Our attorney's been involved in reviewing some draft. Once we receive the final document that we don't think will change from what we've been working with.
So we get the document? What's next? Is there anything on our end that we have to do there?
We've got some infrastructure related stuff. At the point we have the document signed, Michael gets some transformers order. And we of course got some engineering and some transformer work. I think Mike was working with our, our powers, our engineer, to make some good improvements to that area. So we'll start those projects in earnest. We certainly got the, the long lead time are the transformers. We are expecting to have those in time for those commercial operations.
So we'll have our work done for the breaking of ground in 23?
We'll have to wait till, we'll have to equip here, we'll have to wait till the break ground, we kind of agree.
So that'd be next spring then?
Well, if it break ground in the summer, it'd probably be this time next year, we'd probably be.
Yeah.
But no problem running that parallel with them. Yeah, with, yeah, anytime that there's a chance that we can run anything in there at the same time, we'll go off our conference.
Other questions for Rocky or Chris or Mike? Thank you for joining us, Rocky.
Oh, it's, it's my pleasure and, and I really can't say enough just how impressed I am with your utility and how it operates. I mean, the, the fact that you guys have, you know, 100% redundancy and that, and that, you know, Chris and Mike still found a way to build that in with the solar too. It's, it's just really impressive, so it's been a pleasure working with you guys and I apologize for the delays.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to keep this moving, there we go. Anything else on the electric utility? Communications utility, Kurt? Anything before we jump into the presentations? The fiber financing review?
Alrighty, for this one, I just handed out our preliminary official statement. Mike Maloney's on, I'll turn it over to him and he'll kind of, I think we're going to walk through some updates and then we'll talk about this document and why it may be a little less important. Was.
Yep, thank you, Chris, that's a good segue. Hope the volume's okay in the conference room, if not, let me know. Want to do three things for the board today. One, I'm going to give you an update since the information I provided for the board packets. Two, I'm going to walk through that board packet information briefly, though I know you've likely looked through that already. And then the third piece is we'll address the offering document in today's action item. I want to be very clear that today's board action is an administrative step. The balance of the actual loan paperwork will be completed on the 12th, so we'll kind of go from that big picture. Before jumping into the slides that I prepared for the packet, I want to be clear, while we were articulating kind of a, a double barrel or dual track approach, that the I M U staff and the attorneys were very accommodating of, there's a clear difference between using the bond market and a direct bank loan. I won't go into too much of the detail, but there are some tax status benefits and benefits in both directions. Ultimately, when you go to the bond market, we need to prepare an offering document like this preliminary official statement that we'll be talking about. The bank loan market does not require that step. We wanted to leave our options open. I put that packet together or that presentation together for your packet to demonstrate both options and where we thought we would be. We ultimately got a compelling bank loan offer late Thursday, which I shared with Chris and staff, and we worked through with the team to bring you today. So that bank placement option that's articulated in that presentation is actually kind of a bird in the hand now, slightly better than actually what's presented there. And I expect that the board will proceed with that. In, in many cases, you're rendering this preliminary official statement piece moot. So that's very positive news to bring back to you folks. And then a late update today that I want to pass along, I don't even have a chance to share with staff yet. We've always felt this is really a community project and the legacy of the telecommunications utility, it goes back almost 25 years. Some of your community banks have been part along the way. And while we got a very compelling offer from a national commercial lending organization who will participate on the taxable transaction, your, your two, two local financial institutions have actually agreed to once again step up and match terms on the tax exempt piece, really making this again a true community project with, I'm pleased to share with you today. It's something Chris D, I know, and I were very focused on and proud to bring that back for you today. So with that kind of summary, I want to get into the slides just for your context, refresh folks on what they're talking through today and we can kind of go from there. I believe that's in a packet, I don't know if that'll necessarily be shared on the screen, but you should have that information in front of you. We'll start with slide two, just on the overview. You know, the impetus for proceeding is not just the fact that we're about five years live and we've got good financial information, not just with the fiscal 21 audit, but actually unaudited 22 information. But we're going to be splitting in 50/50 the planned transmission project under the 2080 E agreement with Pella, I believe those bids were to be opened today. The other piece of this was potentially refinancing some of the 2017 startup debt that we talked about before. I'd articulated where those rates are generally at, looking for a reset. These are as of last week, but those would be at five and a half and six and a half percent respectively. So if we had an opportunity to knock out those potential onerous reset rates from the original startup debt, this would be a good opportunity as well. Going to slide three is just a little bit more detail for you folks on the bond market versus a private placement. And the challenge with the bond market is that we are assembling a bona fide securities offering. So we've been working with Dorsey as your bond and disclosure counsel as well as staff to put this preliminary official statement, it's really going to be the offering document for that financing, out and then soliciting bond market rates later in September. So we'd be at somewhat of the mercy of not just investors, but market conditions to get that completed. One of the things we were hoping to do was avoid a rating due to some specific tax status considerations that unfortunately were not going to be available for us at this time. So with that dual track approach we were already planning on, it became likely more attractive to get that so-called bird in the hand. We have a locked interest rate offer now on the table where we've secured final credit approval, where rates and terms are more favorable than what we'd actually experienced in all likelihood in the bond market. So it's really a win-win from that standpoint. I think it's very easy for someone to say, well, why didn't we go down this path initially? And the reason for that is there's no slam dunk that we're going to get investors to provide, not only their ability to get through the credit hurdles, but also favorable rates and feedback. It's possible to do that, but it's not something we want to bank on, which is why we ran this dual track approach. I'm happy to answer any more questions on this, let's go to slide four, because I think this is important to show where that benefit would be. Just from a cash flow analysis standpoint, I wanted to point out that the placement and projected terms were more favorable. And I'm pleased to share that based on the feedback that we did lock in last week. in terms of credit approvals, it'd actually be slightly better than what I'm presenting here on the placement scenario. A couple of things to note beyond just the annual debt service payments and total debt service. One, the placement is projected to be a year shorter on the financing than what was otherwise expected from the bond market. We're not dependent on a rating in the lower table as before. And we've got the most flexible covenants kind of staying in line with the original bank covenants we secured in twenty seventeen without any concern about more stronger covenants or reserve requirements that we'd otherwise be subject to. So, you know, this bird in the hand type offer that again, we'd be executing at your September twelfth meeting really meets a lot of the criteria we're looking for and eliminates some of the downside and market risk that we might otherwise see in the bond market. So let's go to slide five and just take a look at some of the 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 details from the number standpoint.
Can I question first before you? The term going out twelve years, how does that compare to the original bond issuance?
Yep, absolutely. And that was a detail I was gonna add, Adam. So this is great timing for that. We are not on the refinancing pieces changing any of the term. Those go out to twenty thirty-two on both the twenty seventeen A and B. And we're structuring those consistently with that. The additional for the reason we go out to twenty thirty-four is specifically for the repayment on the new transmission line aspects of the project. If you might recall, we'd analyze that from a break even standpoint on a twenty-year amortization. But just based on the cash flow and existing debt and what we're able to find with savings here on the existing refinancing, we're able to scoot that up to get everything repaid over a twelve-year period. Is that sufficient for an answer for you, Adam, at this time?
Yeah, so we're we're leaving the the debt that we have already outstanding. You're not extending the term on that at all. And it's only roughly one point six million that is extending it two years beyond that.
That's right. And then we're trying to suck up some of that interest savings to help servicing on the new transmission line.
So there's still two different buckets.
That's right.
We'll just have a refinance for the old.
That's right.
Into our, this this number doesn't include that twenty seventeen debt.
Yes, it does.
It does. This is this is the this is your final payments. This is where you'd be with all your debt outstanding. So this would just be the seventeen A and B would go away. And the refinance debt is inside both of these cash flow projections here.
And this is as for both Chris and Mike, I think it'd be really helpful for the board to see the components that are going into this. What you just described, Mike, it's okay, how much how much is outstanding on the two thousand seventeen A and on the B, the one point six million plus cost of issuance?
Yep, I I sent that along a little earlier, Adam. I don't know if that was able to be handed out, because I wanted to address just that. I'm gonna try to screen share here. I don't blow this up a little bit so we can all see.
Yeah, we got it on a TV, so we're not gonna be able to see it. And and if you, we don't have to cover this now. If you send that out to us, I think it'll make sense.
Yeah, yep. And it's it will be finalized, subject to the final bids from the transport fiber. I'll break it down just verbally, Adam, for you at this point, if that's useful. But the short story is about one point six of the tax exempt transaction would be related to the transport fiber line. And we would also plan to capitalize some interest in terms of getting that up and running next year. So you wouldn't pay interest on that portion until that's up and running and starting to get that kind of net benefit to the system, which is helpful. About five point nine million of the tax exempt series would be for redeeming the tax exempt twenty seventeen A. I have right now about two hundred thousand dollars of issuance cost in there. That's probably on the high side, but dependent on where we end up with the transport bids. The total tax exempt financing would be about seven point eight million. The taxable twenty twenty-two B, I have at two point eight million. It is solely for refunding purposes. It would redeem the twenty seventeen B of about two point seven million. Around seventy-five thousand dollars for issuance cost. Again, just preliminary projections there, some to final changes. The total borrowing amount between A and B would be about ten point six million. I know something you've brought up previously, Adam, is how that might compare to the not to exceed amount from the public hearing process completed at the last two meetings. That was twelve point two. I'd mentioned I expected us to be much lower. Because the bank loan process does not require a reserve fund, we're actually much lower than that. So that's how we end up in the ten-six range versus the twelve point two conservative number we use for hearing purposes.
Thank you, Mike. Very helpful.
And I will have this in a final form for you for the twelfth meeting when you take action on both these loans.
And one additional question, you you kind of already hit on it, but the closing cost or the cost of issuance cost that you mentioned. Can you talk about how through the private placement with a bank that we're doing, how those would compare to if we did more of a public issuance?
Yeah, absolutely. So kind of three three factors there from that standpoint. Number one, you know, will be a little bit less just from a a risk premium standpoint of not offering this out in the market. This is a fixed that's rate that's gonna be set and established today. Two, our council is gonna be a little bit less because they won't be issuing any opinion or any support on our behalf on the offering document. I won't speak for Chris specifically here, but typically when we've gone this route, you know, Dorsey's gonna bill for some of the work engaged on a few of those pieces, but there'll be at least one less opinion related to this disclosure work. So again, not squeezing Chris and Dorsey there, just traditionally, that's how it goes. So we'd have some efficiencies on the issuance costs in addition to reserve fund that'll help reduce the sizing here.
And and then if we don't have to get a rating, that's gonna be cost save.
Absolutely. Sorry, Adam. Kind of took that for granted in terms of the overall scheme there. The only additional cost would be likely some modest lender council fees, which again, wouldn't offset any of the other additional upside from the from the transaction there.
So we didn't have to have a reading previously?
No, no. When we do a bank loan, we don't. The plan of finance here was to keep the the loans bank qualified, which is a specialized tax exemption status. When you when you do that, we can potentially market the bonds without a rating. And that was the 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 big benefit here, being able to go with the bank placement route. You can't really sell this not so-called non-bank qualified bonds without a rating, without reaching into the high yield space. It's just a a mix and match of who the investors might be. I'm more than happy to have a longer conversation with folks offline if they're they're interested there, but I think Chris and her team knew once we understood it was gonna be on the non-bank qualified side. You know, the bank placement option was gonna look a lot more attractive if we could ultimately secure that financing and and happy to get the results we did here today.
And and just to reiterate that for my board members here, you on the bank or doing the direct purchase with a bank, not only are we getting probably a better interest rate as he was describing, but we're paying less to do, we're paying less to do this whole deal.
Again, there's this is not a magic answer every time. I'm particularly pleased on the performance here. I I I know I talked with Chris D. offline here. Uh, this is not something I do a lot of telecom transactions around the Midwest, not just in Iowa, not just startups. This is not some slam dunk where everybody gets credit approved. There's a real story here. And I I know the whole team worked very hard to make sure we could perform well here. So this is a tool in our toolbox and we've used it in in different circumstances for the utility, whether it's the electric side or telecom side, but this was a particularly favorable outcome overall. You bet. You bet. So I I will finish on the slides there, kind of slide five, just for some context. You know, I mentioned that the rates on the original debt are due to reset in about a year and a half from when our planned closing will be. You know, I think we all know what direction rates are going. And I mentioned those being the five and a half to six and a half range is the last week. They've picked up from that time, uh, even even assuming those lower lower rates. And then uh not quite the performance we actually achieved here. So the savings will be a little bit better. Well, we're talking about four hundred fifty thousand. I think we're gonna be approaching about half a million dollars of interest cost savings. That's helping us scoot up and and reduce the interest on our transmission line project as well. There's a target out there in the marketplace of of about three percent savings and we're gonna be well over five percent on the bank placement route. So so it does merit moving forward with that. Just for context, your current annual payments are just a shade under one point one million. So we're really not changing things too dramatically. We're talking about after the refinancing, affording the Pella transmission line for just an additional fifty-five thousand dollars per year in debt payments um above what you're currently paying. And that's, you know, frankly, apples and oranges from some of the break even analysis we were talking about before on the transmission line just for the benefit of the utility. So without a ton of expected future debt issuance, unless it's advantageous, you know, you guys are gonna be in that situation, potentially being debt free in in that twelve-year range. All the loans, I should add, will have an option for redemption early at six years. So uh, not saying you would, but a pretty clear path for for benefit long term for the utility.
So to say that another way, a a good portion of our one point six million is being paid for by interest savings.
Adam, that's that's way better. I'm gonna need you on my wingman tomorrow night. No, that's exactly right. And I, again, we did not accommodate that. We did all the break even analysis on the transmission line earlier this year based on a straight twenty-year amortization. So this is obviously far more favorable um and gonna give that net benefit back to the system much sooner.
Yeah, I just the the point I was gonna put on it, uh, we're talking about in some years, our debt service going up fifty-five thousand dollars. But in a couple of years, that we're gonna save one hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of lease costs on that. So for increasing our debt service fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, we're gonna save one hundred and twenty plus a year in perpetuity. So and all that with, like I said, I did like, we're 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 paying off in twelve years. So that break even, it that's the project and the financing, I think, I mean, it's just, it's a win all around.
Uh, that's right. Um, just the last page is a little bit on timing, which leads into the administrative matters here that we'll get to on the action item for the board. So tonight's resolution, uh, Chris and her team at Dorsey are very thoughtful about how we could be nimble in the process. And we've worked collectively over the last couple of months to keep this dual track process in mind. For the action tonight, it's a combined resolution to approve the offering document in the case we were going to issue bonds as well as authorize the redemption of the existing debt. So that last piece is the key administrative item that we need today so we can finalize the loan at the meeting on the twelfth and close on September twenty-eighth. That's a typical timeline that we'd execute on a loan like this. I will tell you that our deadline is October second to close. So we're comfortably within that, but we want to keep pace from this standpoint. That being said, we're likely, we're not gonna use the offering document. I I think it's right. Chris said this is a win-win-win. We're gonna follow through on the bank loan paperwork. That offering document is in good shape. And if we want to take some time to walk through it, it could be instructive, especially for a couple of the board members who have not been through this process. If and when, for example, the electric or water utility may issue in a year or two. We don't need to spend too much time on that, on on what's been a a busy night for you guys and with more action items. But I'm more than happy to hit a high level synopsis, if at all useful, and obviously answer any other questions that the board or staff may have at this time.
And this this suggestion kind of came from me that we spend a little bit of time going through this. Now that I understand that this is really kind of moot. We may not need to spend as much time on it. The only thing that I would say is this, this has a lot of really good information about IMU, especially. And and so it would be helpful for you to read through that.
And and even if you approve it tonight, it's not official. So if you had comments or came back and approved it and thought some needed to be changed, if we do go forward you know, if if there's a scenario where something falls apart and we are gonna rely on the the official statement, this preliminary official statement can be changed. So if you had feedback when you took this home and are really, really need some good rest and need to read through this, have some thoughts, we can always bring it back and and update it at that point. But you know, like Mike said, it's a we're not going to, in all likelihood, rely on that. So we can go through it to the extent that piece by piece, it might be useful, uh, but don't want to extend the reading unnecessarily.
I would just add this, and you, we've got Chris Kuhn on here as well. You've seen her colleague James Smith over there. Just to set it up for for you guys, Chris and her team really works on the bond council side, James and his team on the disclosure council side. Both have been very diligent working on this and along with staff, and we've supported that process. But that is a good, good document to Adam's point to read through for context. I'll break it down very simply um from a high level. You have an actual attorney on here too, if you want to ask any questions. So that's helpful. The front of that document, the kind of the front page and inside front cover are the just the facts, details about the actual bond offering that are customary for investors to see, helping them understand the relevant dates, tax details and basic security information for the transaction. We get past the table of contents. I like to consider that kind of the front half until we reach the appendices. And that front half of the document has the customary details in terms of what this project is about, how the board has authorized that, the public hearing process we've been through, details about the issue in a very minute way. The the full details end up in the appendix A. And then an overview of really the security terms and covenants from the indenture and master resolution that Chris and her team have put together. I think the other notable portion is really the risk factors that you can imagine for the telecommunications utility, different from maybe the water or electric utility that has monopoly control, the competitive aspects add additional risk compared to many municipal entities. That's the real credit challenge that I I was mentioning earlier in terms of marketing your bonds or the bank loan. Now, I want to be clear while we've gone through those with an Indiana specific lens, they really are telecommunications industry specific items. And in our preliminary due diligence review calls with staff, I think one of the things that we pointed out that it highlights Adam's point is that the utility has done a good job recognizing especially the supply chain type issues, which I know having attended under your board meetings, all of your utilities think about lead times, right? How many times has Mike mentioned the lead times on electric materials? Same thing for telecom. So Kurt and his team have made a point to have enough drop equipment and electronic items available so you could stay up with connecting customers. That reduces some of the risk exposure similar peer utilities might have. Similarly, on the Pella transmission line project, one of the reasons for taking bids now, late summer, early fall, is so we can get this done in twenty twenty-three because of some of the material lead times. So while there's maybe not some too many Indian oil specific items or telecommunications specific risk factors, the utility themselves is taking steps to mitigate some of those risks. I think that's really important details in that sort of front half of the document. Appendix A is really where the great information that your staff has helped prepare. And we've assembled GO in terms of what you guys are doing and what you're all about. And I definitely recommend reading through that in some detail. Appendices B and C are then the draft legal opinions and disclosure certificate items. Legal opinions will be similar to what Chris ultimately executes even on the bank loan. The disclosure items we won't have because we're not going to the bond market. D is going to be your financial statements. This book twenty-one is the latest available that you guys have reviewed before. We put that in there for investors to have easy access to. And then appendix E is really just basic information about having registered bonds that are cleared with DTC. Everything's done electronically this way. As you can imagine, over the last fifteen, twenty years, and that's standard language that's out there. So that's the big picture meat of the matter here for you guys to digest. Again, if you've got some additional questions, more than happy to address those. I know Chris and her team can. And for you board members that maybe haven't been through this before, as as Chris D. knows, we're always happy to be a resource offline as well and go through this in greater detail. So there will be no pop quiz, I promise, on September twelfth, but do want you guys to understand what we're doing in a little bit of context for uh any future issuance you might have on the electric or water side in the future.
Thank you, Mike, for walking that through. For those of us that haven't been through the process, that is helpful. I was definitely lost in that document this afternoon. So moving on then, do we still take the motion to approve the document?
Yeah, yeah, the 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 big key here is we've authorized the redemption of the outstanding debt.
So I need a first and second motion on the resolution authorizing the use of an official statement in connection with the sale of bonds thereunder and authorizing the redemption of outstanding debt.
Board member Sal Gray? White?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Voits?
Yes.
Excellent. Look forward to bringing uh back the final loan information and details for you on the twelfth and having this closed later that month. A special thanks, I know Chris L. and Kurt did a lot of work behind the scenes getting me information and a lot of times on short notice. So I want to thank staff again for their efforts on this and and appreciate the board's time tonight.
Great. Thanks again for spending time with us tonight, Mike.
Yeah, I just brought this back before the board. We we have talked about this uh a few meetings ago. This is the way Calix is going with their their price nowadays. So this is the Calix, uh, some support cloud. This includes our licensing and access to ACS, things like that that we've talked about before, three-year contract. I just thought I'd bring it back so you could take a look at it. The quantities will change in year two and year three. Year one is is set up thirty-five hundred, will true up. Uh, the quantities will change in year two and year three, year one is is set up 3500, will true up every uh, year around this time again with whatever customers we have. So that'll go up by 3500, 5,000, depending on how many customers we had each year.
So does that price lock in even?
That the price itself is locked in. Yeah, it'll just be the customer account. So that will change. So, yep.
Questions occurred on the contract? And you know, first and second motion for the approval of a three year contract with Calix for support cloud licensing.
Second.
I think the voice vote all in favor. Okay, now we have a conversation around the APSB clear QAM. Receiver and dual processor. I have no idea what I just said.
Home receiver. So, yeah, uh, we were notified by, uh, the the TEGNA group, uh, they, uh, own W O I and KCWI. Uh, that they're adding more sub channels. And, uh, in our agreement with TEGNA, we are required to actually, uh, uh, provide those channels to our customers. So, uh, the good news is we don't have to pay for them, but the bad news is we do have to provide them. So there are three other, uh, SD channels that will come up, uh, that need to come up and be provided. We do not have that capability right now with our, uh, APSB uh, units out at the water tower. We we have two of them out there right now, uh, but they're full of using other sub channels. So so this is just an increase, a new module that we're gonna drop in out there. Unfortunately, it's expensive little guy, it's about 16 grand. Uh, it will give us the capability for future expansion, though we are able to do four HD and 12 SD channels. So
Is that everything that we foresee coming in the future? Or do we see anything else that we might need to consider?
I I think this will will cover us for a bit. We'll end up using, I I have one SD channel available right now on the subway I have out there right now. So we'll end up using uh, two SD channels. Uh, and then there's also a KDMI channel we can carry in HD as well right now. So we'll flip it over to HD. So so it gives us three HD channels and what was it, 10 SD channels for future expansion. So should should put us in a pretty good spot. Uh, the nice part, too, is if we were get to a spot where we lost one of those other eight PSBs, uh, we can move stuff around at least at a primary channel spec. So, but.
And if the trend is current, streaming is gonna take over television anyway.
Right, yeah, well, we'll see. So, but the locals, uh, obviously, uh, yeah, they they keep adding those sub channels on. Uh, as I mentioned 20 AD agreements before, uh, the good news on this is, uh, we do have a 28 E agreement with Pella. On the Hillcraft head in equipment, uh, which means it's a 60 40 split. Uh, we take about 60% of that and call it 40. So uh, our net on this alone to about 9,630, I'll pick up the rest.
Other questions occurred on that? I need a sec. The first and second motion for the approval of the purchase of an APSB clear QAM receiver and dual processor licensing and maintenance of the amount of $16,051.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
The sad thing is, I lived in technology for a long time.
Change is quick, doesn't it?
Questions approved. All right. Moving on to the communications utility informational items.
Yep, we'll keep this quick. Another busy month. We're gonna have around 90 installs. So that's that's pretty comparable what we've been doing last few months. Uh, we'll slow down a little bit September. I'm gonna be shortstop. I've got a tech that's gonna be off for six weeks. So they'll take us down to two techs. So September will slow up a little bit, but, uh, uh, we'll keep plugging away.
Uh, still roughly 50 50.
Yeah, 50 50, it's kind of oversee. Yep. So, yep. So, yeah, I would expect as, uh, the numbers to increase by 40, 45 this this month. We'll see where they are at the end, but that's kind of where it's been here the last three, four months.
Where they keep coming from.
Um, we did have a 144 count that was hit by a contractor over at Boston and D. Uh, multiple fibers were broke. Uh, amazingly enough, though, it did not split the the fiber. Uh, once we get it dug out and then pulled out, we'll bring it in and show it to you. But, uh, uh, we were lucky enough that the the fibers that were broke were able to patch around. We did have a oh, a couple hour outage for a 50, 60 customers during that time. But thankfully, the entire fiber wasn't cut. So uh, we're gonna fix that on August 30th. That's gonna be a an overnight, uh, maintenance window. We'll start at midnight, hope to be wrapped up by 5:00 AM. It is gonna affect quite a few customers. Uh, that fiber carries, uh, main feeders for service areas 12, 4, 5, 1, 6, and 2, approximately 750 residential customers. So.
Can we get notices out to them?
Yeah, we will get, yeah, we'll do our, we'll go out and do it on our normal social media type stuff. We'll start getting those out later this week. So let people know. Uh, that fiber also also carries 911 traffic from Simpson Tower, all the skating systems for sewer and water, the Simpson College transit traffic, and also happens to be our main transport line up to 666 Walmart. So, uh, yeah, it's it's one of those things that happened. We had warned them that there was a very, very important line and they were putting in the last sidewalk and literally, I think, the second to last spike, they pounded in the ground. They got it. So we were close. So, but anyway, uh, total maintenance window needs. Yeah, well, they did really good up to that point. So, but yeah, that's that last spike. Hopefully, but waiting until it'll be a five hours. Uh, we are gonna bring in help to splice on this so we can splice on both ends. So instead of having splice one end, then go to the other, and that time we'll have supplies on both ends working. So hopefully, nobody is down for an extended period of time. Well, obviously, coordinated with the 911 traffic and the skating system and stuff like that, to get keep those, get those back up as quickly as possible. Um, my hope is that even those service areas that nobody's without service more than hour, hour and a half. So if everything goes correctly. Uh, we will do it, uh, sorry, at midnight on, uh, August 30th. So Tuesday morning. What else? So, yeah. Uh, but yeah, that that was service areas basically is entire north west side of town. We'll we'll be down at least for a quarter of a thirty. Other than that, that's our excitement.
That's enough. Okay, moving on to the combined electric water and communications action. We have a consideration of the approval of an agreement with impact to administer the Iowa low income home energy assistance program.
I'll, uh, say a few words and Alicia Kevin add, uh, this is a an agreement we sign every year. Uh, it is for impact, uh, to administer the federal light heat program. And so, uh, this does benefit our local residents that, uh, are low income. Uh, the federal money, uh, is passed through state and then obviously the state and local impact will, uh, pass it along to uh, us for our customers' benefit. Uh, it is for, uh, the first priority of the money is the customer's primary heating source. So in a lot of cases, uh, when we sign this agreement, the money first goes to Minnamarca Energy, uh, in the form of natural gas, uh, as their primary heat source. We do have a number of customers, particularly in apartments, though, that are electric heat. And so we are uh, first on first priority on on that list. So we typically do receive dollars, uh, even from the natural gas customers. Uh, there's usually sufficient dollars enough to to make it down to us. So all in all, this is a, uh, it's a community benefit. The benefits are, uh, low income residents. The, uh, the cost or compliance or what we are promising in this document is that we will follow the, uh, winter moratorium that we won't shut off customers that are qualified for this program. Uh, our, uh, CSR's do work with impact and receive those, uh, uh, that, uh, customers qualification or or when they're both working and when they've, uh, qualified.
One of the months of the moratorium.
Yeah, November 1 and and April 1st. So, yeah, ultimately, for, uh, the ability to receive, uh, federal funds, we have to provide, uh, not shop the the electrical and other utility services during that, uh, winter moratorium, unless you have thoughts.
Anything change in this contract versus previous?
Those are just the impact customers. The people to sign up for and are approved for impact. Have the moratorium for it's not like.
Correct, yep. Yeah, we, uh, uh, we don't end up shutting all customers off under 20 degrees and kind of apply some of these to everyone.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just.
But the people with the legal protection are just the people that qualify. And that you have to help me through this, that when we officially receive notice, paper notice of the customers, we usually get a prenotice via phone. And then when we receive the official notice, uh, that once we receive the official paper notice, that's when the customers are protected. Okay, it's time.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we have an item for strategic plan. Are we gonna table that?
Yeah, we'll, uh, just go ahead and cancel that. Skip through that. We'll, uh, put that at our next meeting. We'll get a little more time.
Any input from any of you on things you'd like to hear specifically out of plan update from us? All right, I'm gonna move ahead to.
I'll, uh, just kind of review. Uh, last week I was, uh, at our mean, uh, our wholesalers, uh, board meeting. So a couple of update items. Just to pass along, uh, natural gas obviously still remains volatile. Prices are down. They're down right now. Expected to be volatile through the winter, at least, uh, at last year's, uh, rates, but there does seem to be a little more pricing volatility. The average will likely maintain, uh, at or near last year, but, uh, with added volatility, uh, the utility there is adding some, uh, extra reserves to withstand some of those expected highs and and costs. Um, Mean is now participating with the Sand Hills project with Rocky. They're doing their own 10 megawatt installation. Um, they, uh, the board of directors authorized staff to begin evaluating site options. Uh, throwing Indianola out as an option. They mean would be looking to purchase and or lease property uh, to to do their own mean owned solar installation.
All of us or?
Yeah.
So it's just a, like an umbrella?
Yeah, yeah, just as they, as me is responsible providing our wholesale power through the various means. This would be a distributed, uh, uh, generation option. Uh, so again, I talked a little bit about how the four megawatts will probably save us some pretty substantial dollars on transmission. If we did happen to, uh, get selected for a site and that does require a lot, you know, they're looking for a site to lease. Uh, has to meet all the regulations. We would benefit both from the, uh, overall, you know, environmental aspect of having a little more, uh, uh, solar energy in our territory. Uh, we benefit from the transmission savings that we would see because more of that power, uh, would be generated locally or or behind our meter. Um, and of course, that savings would be shared across all of Mean's members.
So would we have a location in mind if we offered that?
We don't have any. I I talked with the city about options, but Mean may purchase land, uh, or look to lease from somebody that already owns it, uh, uh, to do a, where we wouldn't be involved in it necessarily. They'd be working at a lease.
With a private name?
Yeah, from a private landowner. Um, they had talked about it doesn't necessarily even need to be in our city limits. Uh, it might be outside as long as we can access our transmission facilities from it. Uh, there's a number of options there and.
How much plant would they?
Um, probably about 10 acres. Uh, they are, uh, this project is 10 megawatts in total. Uh, you know, just looking at our size and kind of scaling it down between us and some, uh, some of the smaller communities. And I think the most we would see is one. Uh, but certainly if they did have a lot of land in a smaller community that had the substation capacity, that's kind of one of the big hurdles that they're seeing. Uh, not everyone does have the redundancy that we do, which would kind of, uh, unless they are willing to put those upgrades, kind of eliminates them out of the portfolio. So you might get some cheaper land cost from one of those smaller communities in Nebraska. But if they don't have the, if they need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars upgrade the facilities, you know, it doesn't work out.
What size was our lot?
Uh, four megawatts.
Yeah, but.
Uh, or they're gonna be about 25 acres.
Ours is 25. They need 10 and we're half the size.
They're they're looking at eight to 10, you know, the.
Well, I'm just thinking if we get, if we have 25 acres, they need 10 for 10 megawatts. We were only putting four megawatts. I'm doing the math and we have we have 20 acres.
No, that, so you need about, uh, five, five acres per megawatt for, uh, so they're, they're looking for 10 acres for one megawatt. We're going 25, uh, 25 acres.
Oh, so they're not looking for the full 10 megawatts here?
Correct. Okay, they're likely gonna move that around to a number of communities. Uh, you know, so they're, what the staff had directed is to look for land up to 10 acres to put as much on 10 acres. Okay, I just thrown out that one megawatt. That's kind of a.
No, that one, that that helps. That I was.
Okay.
Um, so I, I am joining the governance committee. Um, there will be a little more time dedication, but this will allow IMU to have more important input to the contract obligations in the future. One of those big items that's being discussed is, you know, terms and termination. And you know, if we incur new debt, this could be a perpetual contract that we're in. Um, governance committee is reviewing that and looking at options. So I thought that would be a great opportunity to have IMU represented there.
How many are representing?
I think it's gonna be six in the committee.
Is that what's referred to as the management committee or is that a separate?
No, it's a separate committee. That's that's the manager or the executive and management committee has gone away in favor of more subcommittees. This is maybe a reformation of that for specific governance topics. So it's kind of a re, maybe a half of the management committee is created at that point. In our meeting, we approved, uh, moving away from our current, uh, natural gas, or I'm sorry, our natural, our landfill energy, environmental attributes type of concept. We pay extra money to get some power specifically, uh, from our, uh, Metro Waste Authority production facility. Um, we are gonna go away from that concept and they're gonna move to a green rate option where they're gonna take all those environmental, uh, attributes that they have and allow elective participation at different levels. So while we had, uh, participated to the tune of about 5% of our electricity from that natural gas core, uh, we'll have the option to, uh, they're gonna terminate all those contracts. We'll have the option to uh, do more or less depending on, you know, what that green rate is. So we'll have some, uh, as soon as that contract is fulfilled and terminated and that new green rate, uh, that includes all the environmental attributes, we'll have an opportunity to, uh, choose our participation level. Um, so it's something to look forward in the future, a little more, uh, uh, conceptual. Um, we also talked about the, uh, federal, uh, legislation that passed. And of course, uh, like everything, there's good news and bad news. Uh, the good news is the tax incentives involved in that, uh, for the first time, uh, will apply to public power agencies, uh, public power entities. Uh, in the past, really, that's only been private power companies that were able to, you know, that that paid taxes would be able to use those tax credits. Uh, we'll be able to participate now. So that that does lower uh, the hurdle, uh, for doing more, uh, the desirable green energy type of production for us. Uh, we'll be able to tap those, uh, tax credits. The bad news on that is it comes with a lot of taxes and regulation on the other forms of energy. And so likely in the short term, we'll see some upward pressure on our wholesale prices. Just as they're, uh, you know, they they haven't fully vetted the consequences pro and con, uh, with one outweigh or outweigh the other. Um, but likely see some upward pressure on our wholesale prices from the, uh, environmental attribute aspect of that. Um, and the the last, uh, I'll skip a couple of the last probably bit of bad news, uh, is there's gonna be an increase in the planning reserve margin, uh, in the S. in the SPP territories. They had been at 10. They are moving up to, they're currently at 12 and they'll be moving that planning reserve margin from 12% to 15%. It matches what we have, have to have in the MISO region. But anytime you need to have more power sitting in reserve to cover any potential cost. That's going to put upward pressure on wholesale prices for the entire organization.
And is that a result of concerns for the rolling blackouts?
Yeah, they play a large part in that. Maybe they had planned on taking a little bit of extra time, but think as aggressive, but some of the coal retirements and the natural gas retirements and the green energy coming on, it doesn't quite have that level of reliability. They're looking to get that on the backend by requiring a higher reserve margin on the production.
And they had to use the rolling blackout?
Not, nothing significant or nothing newsworthy where it may put a made it down to us. So, well, I did. I would say we're, we're done with the concern, but it now is not summer anymore and we didn't have any significant issues. So. Don't expect it.
I will take a motion, first and second motion to enter into closed session in accordance with Iowa code section 21, 5, 1J to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could reasonably could be reasonably expected to increase the price. The government body would have to pay for that property.
Before we move, can we, we're also going to start our closed session on marketing. Just want to do that if we were in an open session. Point on that one will get moved.
I'll take a first and second motion on the first. Okay, we'll enter in a closed session. Thanks again, you guys, tonight for the extended meeting. I appreciate the time and effort, the information together.
Board member Smith?
Yes.
Voits?
Yes.
Selbry?
Yes.
White?
Yes.